Conservation Committee. Peter, Ron, both of you, whichever.
I'm Peter Cooper, Chairman of the Energy Conservation Committee and Ron Walter, Secretary. So I'll start out with some of the issues that we've identified with our annual Energy Management Plan visit, which is a visitation of the various facilities in town. And Ron has some items related to education and information. At the transfer station, they've identified the need for a safety and security lighting. They're losing some recycled material, motion-activated light, possibly solar power would be probably a good address at that location. We hear that he may have opportunity at a Groveton to send recycled plastics, the otherwise undesirable, and Groveton operation maybe could take those. So we support that initiative. And finally, he's identified that he could use programmable thermostats in a couple locations in the building. As you know, there's only limited space that's heated at all there, a pretty lean operation. But as far as the energy use there, they're a model of, you know, they're very true. At the Opera House, we have this insulation and air sealing contract. That was a Warren article last March. The low bid is in fact lower than what we had from the audit and what was indicated in the Warren article. So that's good news. So there'll be less money spent there. Probably the rebate from Eversource will be proportionally lower as well. Don't know where that will fall, but probably it'll get less. Other items that dealing with the folks at the Opera House is that they need a more user-friendly thermostat for the venue, which makes it easier for a timer on occupied condition versus unoccupied, and differentiate between the venue and the office spaces around the perimeter. Basically, they need something that's simpler. You know, most anything you buy that's microprocessor-based is very complicated for an occasional user to deal with. We've had on our list to develop a post-event checklist that could go with the Opera House process or document they give to renters. We'd like to develop an energy-related page for that, related to shutting the lights off and adjusting the heat and so on. They have some HVAC system opportunities, which requires a bit more expertise that we need to get a place to address that. Stained glass windows is another issue that's hard because it's related to this historical preservation, so it's a matter of dealing with the Department of Historical Resources, what can be done with sealing those windows or putting some extra weatherproof. They have been over there re-glazing the windows, so at least the windows themselves are in better shape, which is, of course, important. And then the conference room, another old item again, is the conference room, the tower room. It needs some kind of window treatment and possibly some air conditioning to make it more usable. Again, that's the window treatment, if it is, the Venetian blinds, it could, some strategy that allows light in at the top without the glare of sunlight coming in would make the space more usable, especially if you have overhead projection in the room. Again, a little bit, a little of expertise required there. It's not just a matter of stopping in Walmart and buying some Venetian blinds. We could do a better job if we had a little bit more expertise applied to it. Police Department is pretty well, pretty good shape. They had, we did one motion detector with the last lighting project, and I guess they have a few more rooms that they identified that could use motion sensors for lighting controls. The fire department had part of the audit, the insulation and air sealing audit, if you recall, included the fire department and the Opera House. Fire department measures were too long a payback, we didn't do any of those. But they did identify some windows that need some work, venting the dryer outside. And more recently, we talked with them, they need some help with the air conditioners as they have more folks overnight occupying some bedrooms that are internal rooms. They have air conditioners that are deploying the hot air into the rest of this internal space of the building. Not the best situation. So the heat pump-based system with the condenser outside and various units in the various buildings would not only be an energy saver, but also just make the place more livable, more usable. So we're, in fact, we heard the same problem and possible solution at the library and at the senior center, that is, replacing window air conditioners at the library. They're well over 10 years old with modern and efficient heat pump-based system. So the engineering and the economics are probably similar in all three. Unfortunately, the financial or administrative part of those three buildings is all different. So that's the hard part of getting those done, but we may be able to work up the engineering and find out what rebates might be available if we were to do it. And then we'll need some help to figure out how to pull it off financially, given the three different panies that control those buildings. So the, I mentioned the heat, air conditioning in the library. They have plans to hire an architect, if they haven't already, to do a, some planning for the building. We heard about that on our visit, that may include some energy-related issues, or we may be able to fit those into the plan once we come back. We need to coordinate our efforts with the library or to do something in a coordinated effort there. So that was the results of our visitations to the various facilities. The, Ron, do you want to cover the educational and information efforts?
Yeah, so I think this is the third year we have descended upon you at a point in time when you start thinking about next year's budget. And in the last two years, we've had Warren articles that we've recommended and supported. This year, we don't have that. I think so many items that Peter mentioned are relatively inexpensive and could be done with end-of-year money, of course, be included in the various departmental budgets. So we don't have a big-ticket item for you this year. And as Peter mentioned, you know, the contract that the town has accepted for the Opera House is about $10,000, less than the appropriations. That was very, very good news. So at the beginning of every year, the committee has a get-together, and we kind of decide what our priorities are going to be for the next year. So this is, this is the result of it for this year. So you've got our projects basically broken down into four categories and then prioritized high, medium, or low within it. So that's the total of our, sort of our menu for this year. And I think we mentioned last year, although, you know, not every building, every municipal building is perfect yet, a lot has been done and achieved over the last several years thanks to the taxpayers supporting various articles. And we're not going to stop looking at buildings, but we decided this year we would shift our emphasis a little bit more to a broader information and education kind of flow, and not specifically just focus on building improvements. And also, we wanted to, as a second major goal for this year, we wanted to come up with a tighter relationship with the school. Of course, we're a town committee, but we've advised the school on a number of issues. But we think there's significant room for improvement on the nature of that relationship. So here are some things that we have done in this general category of education and information sharing. The first of which is already mentioned, is at the 2017 town meeting, various committee members, they did provide testimony on the Opera House Warren article. Secondly, we've started to distribute in town, brought copies for everybody, a bi-monthly free newsletter, and it's all about energy efficiency with a strong emphasis on solar. So these are distributed to various locations throughout town where we thought that they would get the most visibility. So they're available at the town office, at the bank, Bank of New Hampshire, at the transfer station, at Shaw's, at the Healthy Rhino, and in the school system. So that's a very small thing, but it is kind of spreading the word. Thirdly, we did participate in this year's Earth Day celebration. We were over at Remick Park. We had an information booth established there in the very foul weather. And we had a lot of information about energy efficiency. We had a number of items about what our committee has done, various projects and success stories. And we had an LED light bulb promotion. Anybody that actually showed up and showed any interest got a free light bulb. So that was kind of a promotional thing. Fourth, we've submitted a number of energy efficiency articles to the Courier, and we have more coming. There was a little bit of a glitch this summer with the paper moving and whatnot, so there's a few that are still in the mail coming up. But we have that, several articles. We also promoted in a statewide web-based newsletter, the food composting project that the school took on last year at the cafeteria. We heard about it, we got interested in it, we found out about it, we sent the information out to the folks at the state level, and they included it in their newsletter, so they got a little publicity out of that. We've also expanded the town website. We have some additional items on there, including, yeah, this is a website for websites. If you go to our section of the town website, there's a section that Bob O'Connor put together, which has got about 20 or 25 or 30 references to websites that relate to various energy efficiency or conservation topics. We are working with the school district to set up some information tours on what would be considered good examples of energy efficiency in town. And perhaps Mr. Rossi would volunteer to host a gathering. But we're looking for the science students. We're thinking, first of all, maybe going to Dunlton Regional Healthcare to show off their wood chip system and geothermal there. A co-op would be another good place with their expansion in the wing and solar and the electronical, electric car vehicle station there. So that looks promising. We're going to work out some logistics about how we get the little darlings over there and back in 45 minutes, whatever it takes. But we like to have them actually see something in action, and a lot of these are renewable resources for those energy efficiency. And lastly, we are hosting a workshop next month. It's called Button Up New Hampshire, and we're going to advertise it in various ways. But this is a kind of a statewide program. It's geared really toward residential, but some of the same principles would apply to small businesses or anybody that's interested. So we'll be hosting that at the Opera House on the 25th of October, 7:00 PM. This is one of the ways we're plugging it, I guess. And it's about an hour and a half presentation, and they're supposed to, Peter has been to one of them, and it's very good. So we're hoping a good number of people will come out that are interested in winterizing their homes, whatever energy issues they might be, might be interested in. So that's a number of things that we've done that are kind of in this other category, not fixing buildings, but kind of spread the word, which we think is sort of, you know, part of our broader mission.
Yes. Do you have any questions?
I do have a question regarding the insulation budget. I don't know what the process is or what the, can those additional funds that are available be used for some of these other things that are on the list?
Your report is geared to this time of the year, so that if it's not a big-ticket item, it's going to be a Warren article. It's something that we as the town manager can hopefully work through in the budget process.
So there's no requirements that it go back to the general fund or anything like that?
For the Warren article?
Well, assuming the budget's under what was budgeted.
Oh, right. Yeah, we can.
Yeah, and we're talking.
We can use it for other, yeah.
We're talking about future expenditures, so now's the time to plug them into the budget if we want to.
No, this is the, what was approved at the last.
Are you talking about the Opera House?
The Opera House insulation, yeah.
So that was a specific Warren article, and we have to look at the language to see if it was restrictive.
You may not be able to apply it to anything else. It depends on how it's written. Skylar, I have a couple of questions I can ask. These are specific. I wish the fire chief was here, but he's not. Venting the dryer at the fire station, when he and I go out to homes and we're inspecting homes, and we find that the dryer is not vented, it's sited in whatever we send to the homeowners. And I've seen this for two years, and I've always meant to ask offline, but I'm going to ask it here. Obviously, that dryer at the fire station is not creating a fire hazard.
Yeah, I think it's an electric dryer, I think, and it also is going into a pretty large space, which, you know, so it's not like, you know, at my house, it would not be good for, but, yeah, I think he's a long, must be a long ways away from an external wall, I gather.
Well, that was my question, is where it's located. Because this is an issue. I mean, it's obviously not an issue there, even though it's not vented, so. Okay, so it's some distance from an outer wall or from whatever else could, you know, become heated up?
Right.
Okay. I want to go to the one, the last, one of the last ones you came up with here, which had to do with the town garage. And I think I understand what you're saying here. For a number of reasons, it has been difficult to measure the cost savings of new garage. The acquisition and installation of a BTU meter at the garage will considerably advance efforts. Regulating the temperatures, temperature throughout the garage has proven a bit of a problem due to the large solar gain on the front of the building. So sun comes in, right? I mean, is this what we're talking about? It heats up in the front end, and that kind of throws off the calculation in terms of the efficiency component. Am I right in saying?
Well, we haven't gotten actually to the point of calculating efficiency in the first place, that that's an operational issue, that the temperature may go up or down depending on whether the sun is shining. I guess we don't have specifics on that, but we've been plugging the idea of having a BTU meter on that building like we have on the fire station, so that we know how much energy is going in the building. We're still, we're still plugging that idea, and we understand we may be, maybe, do you want to be about that?
Yeah, it's contracted, and I believe they're having, or they're supposed to have before the heat season begins, so.
Great, that'll be good. So, and we are digging around to try to find some benchmarking information on, like, down state, Huffington, I think, put in a garage with radiant floors, where the idea came from, I think, and see what their energy experience is that we can compare, or any others that we could benchmark against. But first, of course, we have to get a good measurement, which we right now don't have.
Right. When, as you know, when we proposed replacing the old garage with the new garage, efficiency was an assumption, but it wasn't the reason why we did it.
Correct, I understand.
The support beams are rusting.
And we feel committed to that principle. And one of the things we've talked about, and Peter's going to take the crack at, is, you know, we know the consumption at the old garage, and once we get to BT, we will have a better understanding of the consumption at the new garage. And then we were going to do kind of a BTU to BTU comparison, given that the new building is 30% bigger than the old building. It's, you know, it's a mathematical calculation. And I think it'll probably come out that even with the bigger building, it's running more efficiently than the old garage. But, you know, we're committed to try to make the best effort at coming up, because voters, you know, supported this, and it was, you know, was promoted as it was going to be an energy-efficient building.
Absolutely.
So we'd like to put a little meat behind that.
Given that. I think it's a good story, and if not, why not? You know, so that's something that we should be doing, is why not?
Right. Thank you.
I recall back at deliberative session, when the discussion of building the new garage, it came out that back in the 50s, when the old garage was built, a whole different theory of construction and heat, and it was designed with a skinny, if you will, roof so that the heat would go to the top and melt the snow.
Right.
Which, of course, things have changed since the 50s.
Well, building codes have changed too.
Well, and for a good reason. So it'd be hard to compare apples to apples.
Right. Yeah, it true, it's not a fair comparison, but it's a nice soundbite.
But you're right, the voters still would like to hear.
Less energy, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I understand. Anything else? Gentlemen, thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Which moves us to the various items under the town manager's report, some of which require action, some don't.
Yes. So first up is the investment policy. This is the policy that annually has to be reviewed and adopted by the select board. And the only changes from this year to last year are the dates on the first page and the last page.
There was no more questions, yeah. That was also a question of mine, so my suggestion would be to, in the future, to make it easier on us, to redline what the changes are. And if they're only the dates.
Will do, yeah.
Makes it easy.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
I got a comment on, there's one thing, I don't have the benefit of having seen it last year, so I had to go through the whole thing. I got a question on Section 4. I think we mean insure, not insure, and I think I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry too much about it, except insure will cost some money, so.
There's different meanings, yes.
The first sentence of Section 4, "The Board of Selectmen is responsible for establishing and maintaining internal control procedures designed to ensure the protection of town assets." I assume that should be insure. And I don't want someone to look at it later and say, I don't want someone to come and have to sell us insurance.
I think you're right.
The only other thing that I throw out is this, the last part of Section 4. Written communications may be via fax, if on letterhead, providing safekeeping. It's not a big deal, but more and more, we're doing, you know, email, signature-verified emails, and I don't know if that's something to look into in the future, just to make, just to join the 21st century and make things easier.
Yeah, and that's at the end of Section 4.
That's the very last sentence of Section 4.
I did have one other question. Have you got, have you got that, Andrew? Under reporting, it says on the second paragraph, "The Treasurer shall submit an annual after the end of the year investment report to the Board of Selectmen that includes the following information," and then a number of things are listed here. Do we get that?
What section is it?
It's in the second last page, reporting under number 10, second paragraph, last sentence. "The Treasurer shall submit an annual end-of-the-year investment report to the Board of Selectmen that includes the following." And then it lists a number of things that would be in the report. As I grow older, my memory is clearly failing me, so tell me, have we ever received one of these?
Yes, you.
No comment.
I shouldn't have said that.
These come to you.
Yes, they do come. From the Treasurer.
Finance director.
From the finance, okay. So it goes to the, from the Treasurer to finance, and then it comes to us.
Right.
How do we go from finance to treasurer for signature, then comes back?
And then comes to us, okay. And I think I know what you're talking about.
The sentence needs to be cleaned up, by the way, if anybody cares.
Yeah.
Should be a comma after annual, a comma after year, and get rid of and, and it's clean.
Don't you ever dare use the word insure again, either.
Although, in a way, with the bonding, you're insured.
Okay, thank you.
So we need to act on this, and we will do so under Board Action near the end of the meeting.
Right. All right, so sewer, sewer usage deduct policy. So this was originally adopted in 1999, and we're reviewing the policy and found that there's some ambiguous language. It spoke about sewer deduct meters for recreation purposes. In reality, that's referring to the town's use, and so it's just really an internal use for our pool, for our ball fields. And it looks confusing in the, in the, in the policy. This policy is really meant for residential, commercial users who have a deduct meter, specifically for irrigation purposes. And so what the change does, it removes recreational uses and also just adds the language that there can't be an internal connection from the deduct meter to our sewer system.
Can you give me an example of irrigation?
So an example would be, there's a commercial entity in town who has a deduct meter to water the grass, and so they have an external irrigation system.
Okay.
And all the water goes into the ground, it doesn't come back into our sewer system.
All right, thank you.
This will. This will reveal how little I know about how these systems are put together. But I don't see anything in here to... There's a section 10 for abuse of the deduct meter option. I don't see anywhere in here where it gives anyone the right to inspect and make sure there's not abuse going on. Does the fact that you can read the meter means you have access to inspect in and of itself?
This would be part of a larger policy, our sewer ordinance. In there, it gives the Department of Public Works the ability to inspect, and not just for this issue, but for others.
Okay.
You'll recall recently, we had a grease issue
Yes.
in town, and under that policy, we inspect the properties.
Okay.
But in reality, we don't get into every property to check.
Yeah, you know, I understand, but I just...
Would it be wise to make reference there to the policy?
I would have to review it again to see how it fits with the whole.
All right.
But I think as it stands right now, if you look at the old one, this is... That might be a better clarification that we could bring back at another time, too.
Okay.
Anything else? That also needs action, which we're going to do under Board Action. Budget and warrant schedule, which we have copies of, and we also have on the screen. Does it require action?
I don't believe so.
It's FYI.
Yeah, this is FYI, this is the schedule that was presented to the budget committee.
I do know that in the process of developing this, Seal was working with the school on rescheduling basketball games and so forth, but this is the end result. So, everything is clear and okay with all the different facilities that we use for the different meetings. That will also... We have it, it'll be published on the website with the public. And lastly, you've got some new bank accounts.
Can we... Before we jump to that, can I ask a question on this schedule here?
Sure.
I know that the issue of the selectmen abstaining from those nonprofit warrant articles and things like that, and the reason that, as I understood it, and I may be wrong, was that we don't feel that we have enough information. And it was requested some time back, they said, well, maybe we should schedule an opportunity for them to come in and make their pitch to us, so we could have an opinion when, come the time of the town meeting. Does this schedule allow for that, or are we... Has anybody considered that?
So, what the... With the budget committee last year, we did have... Some petitioners did come and present to them. I remember, for example, like an animal shelter, or the senior meals program, and library, the chamber, and the airport. There were a number of them that did come. What we could do is schedule some of them in between now and the budget season to actual present to you, either in a work session or break them up.
The smartest thing to do would be, if they are going to present for the budget, to notify us, so that we can attend. I mean, I ended up at a budget meeting by chance, when Jessica presented at the chamber, but I didn't know about it in advance. But if we knew, then, yeah, you can't make all of them, but at least you have the opportunity if you can.
Yeah, well, I just... I understand the whole issue at the... On the ballot, where it says the selectmen are not in favor, I don't remember the exact language, and I know and understand the reason why they have to say that. None of us like it, we couldn't get it changed, I understand that. But also, maybe we can address the fact that we don't want to express an opinion, rather than not express the opinion.
Yeah. I think in fairness to the nonprofits that would be coming forward with articles, we need to give them a specific amount of questions. They need to know what we're looking for. Because when we make the... When we take the position publicly, that we don't have enough information, the implication is that we don't have enough of certain kinds of information. We clearly know what the general overall function of each of these agencies is. From a taxpayer fiscal standpoint, though, we have maybe some specific questions that each of us would want to ask in the area of finances. And I think in fairness to them, so that they don't come in with a presentation that simply doesn't touch on money at all, but just on need, that we would be looking for certain kinds of information. Clearly, the committee that Representative Hennessy's presented in front of with the article that would allow us to go neutral, where we wouldn't have to say yes or no, but we just pass on this, the majority of the committee felt it's our responsibility to get that kind of information. But, you know, there's information in there's information, so I think we would need to come up with some things to ask them to prepare for us.
Right. And if you could think of things that you wanted, and there is a report that each of the organizations submits to, for inclusion in the town report, and some of that is more detailed, and speaks specifically to Littleton residents, or gives some financial information, but are more detailed, if you came up with your thoughts on that, we could compile.
Yeah, I can give you a list of three or four questions that I'm particularly interested in, I just... You can compile them however, but...
Well, the first question comes to my mind, is, if you're asking for money, so you've got to have financial need. So, you need financial statements to prove need. Yeah, I mean, if they're making a million bucks a year, they probably don't need 15,000 from the taxpayers.
Right.
Which is unlikely.
You have a nonprofit.
Well, I know of a nonprofit that went through some very tough times, and they have straightened out their problems, and are no longer having tough times. It hasn't affected their ask. And what it was 20 years ago is no longer the same case, so need would address that.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
So, give us a timeframe, what was your...
So, we have scheduled the petition warrant articles to be reviewed on January 11th. I think what typically happens is, for example, a library, if they have a petition warrant article, then they would present information at their presentation on November 7th. But the petition warrant articles are due... What's the date?
9th.
On the 9th of January. So, we don't even have a list of who's asking until the 9th of January, at the end of the day. So, the 11th may be a good time, a good meeting to plan on coming to for the budget committee.
Yeah, but I think we're...
But requesting the information ahead of time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, let's work towards that.
Okay.
Addressing that. I agree with you, Franco.
So, give me your questions. Financial statements being the first.
Who's going to speak to the Littleton economic conditions on the 17th?
Brian Ward planned on coming and giving us some information.
Okay. And are you going to cover evaluations and fund balances, or you and Karen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
New bank account.
Okay, this... The Parks and Rec program, right now, we use PayPal. It's our only form of accepting alternative payment than cash or check. So, what we want to do is create a new account that'll allow the town to accept credit cards for our programs, basically, so...
So, you need select board authorization to establish those new accounts, right?
That's correct, just one.
Okay, we will also do that under our action items at the end of the meeting. Okay?
Yeah.
Are you done? Or you have more?
Just had the one more, the HB 324.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to give a background on it. The HB 324 seeks to implement the New Hampshire Department of Revenue valuation methodology for utilities. The Supreme Court has already rejected that methodology, and it's based on a number of incorrect assumptions that was demonstrated in the previous Supreme Court hearing. And what I'm putting up here are, if you take the HB 324 and apply it to the tax rates, this is the likely impact according to 2016's tax rates. So, if you look to Littleton, you can see that we have a five... We would have a $5.26 increase.
Per thousand.
Per thousand. And Berlin's another high one, they're at 4968. We've met with our local representation to go over this and talk about what can we do to help educate the committee, and help them to understand the false assumptions and the complication of the formula. And we're going to need to try to help maybe get the public more involved in this, to write to the various committee members, and make phone calls, and things like that. But I think that it's a fairly complicated issue. Brad has anything to say to that? He's spearheading a campaign here locally for us, so...
Well, the only thing I can say right now is that we... This bill was brought forward in the House, and it's right now in science and technology. It was at the end of this past session, it went back to committee to be looked at, it's being looked at again. I think that there are some people on the committee that aren't aware of what the impact of this could be on specific towns like Littleton, Monroe, and Berlin. The reason why this is being pushed is because the power companies don't like to have to negotiate with all the individual towns regarding their dam generation and their other utilities. So, they would like to put this formula out there. Unfortunately, the formula looks like a big windfall for the power companies, and doesn't do anything, and it can hurt communities if this were to go through. I think there's a good chance that we can possibly stop it, but it's going to have to take some effort, some education, of people that are on that committee. If it does come out of the committee, and it looks the same way, and it's voted favorably when it gets to the House floor, then the Littleton delegation, along with other representatives from these other towns, it mostly hurts the North Country, we'll fight it. And if it does pass the House, I think there's a better-than-average chance we could probably stop it, then it goes to the Senate, so we get another shot at it there. But there are some members of the committee that aren't too familiar with what's going on, and we hope to educate them with Andrew's help and others, so we're going to work hard on this. This is the most important proposed legislation of this session for the people of Littleton, quite frankly. So, we're going to do everything we can to stop it.
It seems to me, it would be based on a misconception that this will greatly reduce energy costs to the consumer, but it's not...
So, what we're doing is, we're encouraging Brad and the state reps to gather with Andrew and the town managers and administrations of the other towns to, number one, educate the rest of the people that are going to vote on this, and follow through on the fight as far as we have to go. Ideally, with some education, we can nip it in the book.
So...
Which is where we intend to go.
Are there regions of the state that actually benefit from this bill?
Not really. There are about 60% that are going to see an increase, some of it small. You can see, like, the town of Lisbon, for example, 8 cents per thousand, but they don't have the generating facilities that Littleton and Monroe have, which in some ways are very unique to New Hampshire. So, Littleton and Monroe and Berlin really take this on the chin, and, you know, the whole... Really, the whole idea was to try to make this uniform, rather than having towns fighting with the utilities over what the evaluation is. But, you know, market value is by law how we're supposed to take a look at it, determine the value of these dams, and that's not the formula that the DRA is going to use. It'll be one individual down there, who I call the tax czar, which will determine. It's unelected person that's going to determine what Littleton and all these towns are going to pay.
So, that's Steve Hamilton? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, it wouldn't be him, it'd be somebody that works for Steve Hamilton.
Okay, I've read this article, and I don't... I don't know, I'm not stating it as fact. I'm just wondering if the states in that article, it stated that he doesn't have a position on this.
That's officially what the DRA is saying. They don't have a position.
I think it's...
So, some of them have to be pushing the bill, so I believe it's the power companies. And some are coming out saying, yeah, they want this, and others would be kind of quiet, but...
Yeah, I think that, yeah, the employee's name is Dickman.
Yeah, well, it doesn't matter to me who it is, I'm just curious, it just seems... It seems like such a big issue, I'm surprised there's no position. They don't have a position.
Well, DRA wouldn't take a position, not if it's a legislative question.
They'd take a position on an awful lot of legislative stuff.
Lately, they've been taking an anti-municipal position up to this, all the way up to the Supreme Court, so I... It's curious they would not take a position on this one.
That's...
This would be a real mess for the people of Littleton.
Oh.
You know, all this great work that so many people have done on economic development, this will set us back. We can't get this resolved.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, so we move to other business, which is our dog park committee appointments. And we had great response to our ad in the paper for members of this committee. And we will actually appoint the committee in other business, but I will read off the names of those that have volunteered. Am I using Janice?
Yeah, you can, yeah. You can use them both.
Janice Mercieri, Kayla Bray, Lynn Cartier, Crystal Cleves, Jill Kimble, Don Lambert, Kelly Pigott, Jen Stroker Supiat, Jen Crowe, Laurie Fillion, and Joan Brats. I will also read to you, all the members of residence of Littleton will work with a recreation commission and a recreation director, and their duties are to explore, discuss, and evaluate various locations for an off-leash fenced dog park, weighing the advantage and disadvantage of each specific site. The committee will address the amenities necessary for a fully functional dog park, and develop a cost for the construction of such a facility. Funding, governance, and operational costs will also be developed. The committee will review and operate plans of comparable dog parks, alternatives for operation of the facility, where proposed and evaluated. This includes maintenance of the facility. The final set of recommendations will be proposed and presented to the Board of Selectmen at a public meeting. We will vote on those members in a few minutes. And I have no old business, I have no new business, and that takes us to public comment. And seeing none, whoop! Spoke a little bit too fast. Ralph?
Just a couple things. The energy report that he just gave on that board, can that be made a part of these minutes on the website? We get a copy of it?
I believe we can do that.
Okay. The other thing I've got is on this, when you talk about the nonprofits coming in to present their cases, I said it on some of the meetings last year with the nonprofits coming in, they basically come in and say, this is who we are, we do this for services, and we support some Littleton residents. I think it'd be important to find out from these committees, how many people they actually support from the town of Littleton, Littleton residents. Not who they are, but how many. Because a lot of them are not even in the Littleton town limits, these agencies, they come from Bethlehem and some other towns, and they tell us that they support Littleton residents, but we don't know how many, 100 or 100. So, I think that'd be a good question to put on the report, when we put that together.
Thank you. Hang on. Anyone else?
Is this for general comments about anything? Or just this stuff?
Um, anything.
I know Andrew knows who I am, or at least recognizes my voice. I don't know if you guys have been informed of Mill Street parking issues. I'm Janice Phalog with Littleton Studio School, so now you can all run. I have had many conversations with Mr. Dorsett and Seal. We have been assured, or we have been assured, that we would have access, handicapped access, parking on Mill Street. And we do have a loading area, because we have deliveries of tons of clay, and we have people hauling in lots of quantities of clay and painting supplies and things like that. I'm on the Board of Directors, I was the treasurer and the bookkeeper. I had to resign those positions, because I'm also disabled. And starting in July, I was not able to park at my job. I pleaded, I begged, I cried... I pleaded, I begged, I cried, I screamed, sorry about the strain. My husband, who was a schoolteacher, drove me in several days a week to the studio school in the summer and left me, I live in Lyman, left me and drove back home and then came back to pick me up, but I couldn't continue to work at the studio school because there was no place for me to park. I cannot park on Serenex Street and walk to the studio school. I had it in the neighborhood where Andrew was quoted saying, you know, "We will provide handicapped access to the studio school during this construction." So what did the city do? They went and put up a pedestrian pathway. The beautiful sidewalk wasn't enough, so they put concrete blocks. So now we have a beautiful sidewalk, concrete blocks, and you know what? The pedestrians don't use either of them. The pedestrians still walk in the street. The concrete blocks are getting lots of use, though. I'm sure the police officers know this. The kids on bicycles love them. They come down Mill Street the wrong way, they use those concrete blocks to jump their bikes up onto, and then they go up onto the sidewalk and they do tight turns right by the plate glass windows where I'm sitting at my pottery wheel. So it's exciting. I'm just waiting for somebody to come crashing through. But it's gotten crazy. I filed a complaint with the commission, the Governor's Commission on Human Rights, and they've accepted it, and they filed a lawsuit. We really need a spot in front of the school. If you've been down there, the New Hampshire DOT liaison for disability access drove by several times, and I, have you all seen the parking situation out there?
Uh-huh.
Okay. He said the spot right at the end where there is no curb, where it's a zero-entry curb and there is no concrete block, he said that is a perfect place for my parking spot. And believe it or not, he said off the record, use that as your parking space, and I do on Sundays because I know that the Littleton parking officer is not on duty on Sundays. I hang up my handicap tag, and that's where I park, but I don't dare do it on weekdays because on the one day that we had handicap parking there, when the construction guys removed their cones, because they were told by the city that construction people didn't need the other side of the street, they left off two spaces. I parked my car there like I was told I could, and the parking guy came and tried to give me a ticket. Luckily, Margie Seymour was there and was sure, and it was okay, and he said, "No, I bet she moved those cones herself." And Margie assured him that, no, the construction company did. So anyway, we need a space in front of the school by that curb cut. We would prefer if you just put up a sign saying, "LSS Reserve Parking." We will make a tag, a placard, to put on the dashboard of whichever, now, we have several people who are disabled. It's not just me. I'm there two days a week, doing board member things, being a monitor, teaching classes. I can't get there by myself. I had a 90-year-old mother who, oh my God, brings me in some days. Believe me, if I could, I would walk from Serenex Street, I would crawl from Serenex Street rather than have my mother drive me in. God bless her, she's 90, or 80, I'm sorry. But this is illegal. We need a handicap spot. We need a spot in front of the school. The Governor's Office told me I needed to come talk to you guys, or talk to senators because this is a federal issue. I don't know where to turn. The studio school now has to pay someone to do their books. I was doing this on a voluntary basis. I'm a retired federal employee disabled. I was doing this out of kindness of my heart, just because I love being at the studio school. It's a crazy, wild artistic place. And I was a scientist, I'm not a humanist, but...
While we understand your problem, I believe you filed a lawsuit?
I didn't. The state did.
Well, then, we can't comment.
Okay. Well, all I'm asking is, we need a parking place. You don't even have to make it disabled.
I can speak about future, future stuff.
Just a space.
Part of the planning process is future, but...
I know, you guys probably want to make it a walking mall, so don't make it a disabled place. Make it a Littleton Studio School space. And in fact, it would be better because, right, I stopped there to pick up these pictures, and someone had parked a 15-passenger van on our sidewalk in that space. We don't know who it is. They've been there all afternoon.
By filing a complaint and having them file a lawsuit, you've taken it out of our hands.
What was I supposed to do?
I under, I'm not criticizing you, I'm telling you that we would be remiss to try to resolve it or discuss it with you at this point. There are plans in the future, when all this mess is cleared up, to accommodate that, but right in...
But that doesn't help the other people at the studio school. That doesn't help anyone. You guys went and put up concrete blocks because we have a sidewalk? That doesn't make it, nobody, even the State Department of Transportation is like, why are these concrete blocks there? We've got a perfectly good sidewalk. We've got a new sidewalk. Who's going to plow that? We're not going to shovel it. Are you guys going to come down and shovel it?
So there is a stage plan where, once certain types of activity are done at the site, that a new safety plan will be in place. That involves removing the blocks. Those blocks have been in place due to safety concerns with larger, high-volume vehicles. So as the site, the plan is as the site shifts to smaller vehicles, that include carpenters, electricians, plumbers, that we don't have the same visibility and potential for impact as we have with the larger concrete trucks.
The problem is now, nobody uses that pedestrian safe zone. They still walk in the street. Now, it's even more narrow, people are still going the wrong way down the street, people are having to back up. I mean, the first week those were up, we saw an accident because somebody stopped. They saw, you go down that street, and it's all signs and orange tape and concrete barriers, and somebody came down Mill Street, saw the signs, saw the concrete blocks, and stopped. They didn't see the scooter behind them, they just backed up into the scooter behind them and ran them over. Granted, the person wasn't hurt, the scooter guy got up, you know, and everybody was happy, but it's a disaster down there. People don't use the sidewalk, they don't use the pedestrian pathway, they walk in the street.
What would you like us to do?
We would like to take that space that is now there, that people park in anyway, and label it LSS Reserve, so we can use it for our loading and unloading, which we, they've already made arrangements with Chuders.
Reserve any space for any business.
Okay, it's already been arranged with Chuders, it's adjacent to their loading zone, that we can use that for loading and unloading. We would just like a sign that it's reserved for the studio school, Littleton Studio School, and that we can use that for our disabled patrons when we have somebody there.
And what if every business wanted us to do that?
Does every little business have concrete blocks in front of it? No.
We will consider your request.
Okay. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Rudy?
I, you know, I got to say something about this thing. I don't know, this lady, I just want to remind the town manager, okay, that it wasn't the two people. When we did the complaint about, you know, about the Riverdale district, okay, about parking right in a particular place that she talks about, it's two individuals that they are business of the day, they come up and they talk with you gentlemen about the problem they would have about parking, and not that it was none. Actually, to the town manager, remember, that was the reason why I wrote the letter to the budget, to the, to the zoning, because special favor doesn't work. In this town, special favor doesn't work, because if it works, she'll let over there, she would have special favor. And this, you can remember, you go, you can't go on record and you find out that I stand up and that these two people, I said, yeah, they are right. They got a business of it, they are military, and they're people that can park. People can park it because of the situation you guys are in right now. That's what I mean, the town manager was well aware on everything that was going on over there. If she sent, if she had a lawsuit or something like that, she did it right there, even if it causes a passing.
Rudy, I'll disagree, there is no special favors here. I'll just make that point be done.
Sure, sure.
Any other public comment? Being done, we will move to the board actions. The first action we need to take is adopting the investment policy. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Well, hold on. With the, with the changes we discussed being incorporated, or at least the one change, insure to ensure?
This is the...
Investment.
Investment policy.
That's right.
Just want to make sure that, I don't know, when that comes up again in the discussion, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Three to nothing. So the usage deduct policy, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Budget Committee, was FYI, the new bank account for Parks and Rec, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
That's, this is strictly for Parks and Rec?
That's right.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. 234 Impact, was FYI, the Dog Park Committee, I will read the names, once again, I'll probably butcher them once again. Kyle Ray, Lynn Cartier, Crystal Cleves, Joe Kimble, Don Lambert, Kelly Pilat, Jen Stroker, Sue Pilat, Jen Crowe, Lori Fillion, and Joan Bratz. Is there a motion to approve those names to the new Dog Committee, Dog Park Committee, excuse me?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. We now have four sets of minutes to approve, the first of which is the March 13th, 2017 minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I wasn't at that.
I will second that. Is there any discussion, Mel?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. March 27th, 2017, I think, Franco, you were a brand new selectman at that point.
I was. I don't remember any of this.
Now you're a veteran. Is there a motion to approve the March 27th minutes?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, under Opera, this is just a, filling out a sentence. On, under Opera House on the second page, Dorsett said he was anticipating they would have an official notice on the grant. The energy, I think the word committee, had contacted us, so the word committee would just be inserted in the file.
You want to add the word committee?
Add the word committee.
Got this, huh? Okay. Is there a motion to approve with the correction?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
April 10th, 2017, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. And lastly, April 24th, 2017, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All carried. That concludes the selectman's business and meeting for today, September 25th. Thank you.
Thank you.